I'd like to call to order the zoning board of appeals, a regular hybrid meeting Wednesday, January 8th, 2025 at 6:00 PM in Town Hall, first floor conference room. Could everyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and every being and to this world.
Role call. Charles Gady, present. Kevin Danby on Zoom. Alfred Wilcox, Chubb is, he's out today. Marty Lad here, okay. Erin Caldwell. Andrew, I don't see him. John Miles, president. Laurie Denis. Seated for 24 slash 25 dash 15, Robin Stapletons will be for Alfred Wilcox will be John Miles. Okay, John?
Yes, sir.
Got it. Okay. So 24 slash 25 dash 15, Robin Stapletons requested a variance of par 10.71 slash 10.72, non-conformity enlargement slash change, par 24.5.1, street line setbacks, 25 feet required, 0.5 feet proposed, and par 25.5.3, other yard setbacks, 15 foot required, 10 foot, 10.5 proposed of the zoning regulations to permit the construction of a 227 square foot deck at 20 Hill Street, map 22 slash lot 91, Residence 8 District Coastal Area Management Zone. I assume, Robin, you'll be representing yourself?
Yes.
You want to come up, please?
Not really. Hello, how are you guys? I want to thank you for my continuance and I am better prepared today.
Now, where we last left off, you were going to provide us with drawings that had the information on it.
Yes.
So now the problem, so out of curiosity, when did you get your drawings?
Today.
Okay, got it. So in the future, the problem we're going to have is if you can't provide them
A week ahead of time.
A week ahead of time and you can't put them up on, by computer, you're going to get a continuance.
Okay.
Because the problem is, is that our board members that are on Zoom really can't see the drawings.
I understand.
So I just wanted to let you know what would be happening. Okay, so if you want to pass out the drawings?
Okay. And I'm actually going to pass out these papers because you suggested that I should move the house back. So I actually got an estimate on that. And I also, you also asked for the field card, the one, so I also have a copy of that. And I have the, it's a manual to show.
I stand corrected. Andrew is, is, is here.
Mr. Chairman. The, the new paperwork that you have, we're not going to be able to see any of it. Is there a chance you could somehow take a picture with your phone and text it to us? We have something to refer to?
Or email it out. Good idea.
Yes, anything we can do to get this up to them aside from doing it on my phone and sending it to them? See what I came up with.
Well, because the revised print shows that there's only one variance now because we got rid of the deck on the sides. The variance now is just for the setback for the front deck.
I guess my question is this.
And this is John Simone?
John?
Yes.
Who did the notes and who made the changes to the zoning compliance paper?
Attorney Davros.
Okay. Where did? I don't see anybody's. Exactly. Okay.
So the only thing that I can do potentially is go scan it upstairs. I don't know if I'm allowed to leave, but I can go scan it and email it to the board, the three members.
Let's take a slight.
So I would suggest maybe holding, tabling this one for a little bit to go to potentially a quick summary or bring together?
I think, I think what we're going to do is we're going to have a five minute recess so that we can get this document scanned. To get that document scanned. We're going to come, coming out of recess now. Okay. Basically explain what we have because I have some concerns.
Okay.
So what, can we, what we've done differently than what we've heard from the previous day, from last, the last time you were here? What has changed other, in regards to the drawing that we requested and the information requested?
Reduced some of the conformities by making the deck a little narrower because a porch that was on the house was 100 square feet. That was removed.
Here again is the problem. The drawing does not reflect what was existing. So we don't know what was existing.
Okay.
So the, and all the documentation and the notes and the modifications, were they done by the, by?
Robert C. Simone?
Robert C. Simone? That's another problem because he's a certified guy, surveyor. So it's nice to have it on here, but it's not legitimate.
Okay.
But what's really important is that you have to show us what you originally had on the drawing. So we get a, so we get an existing versus a proposed. Looking at a drawing and saying something was there because you're going to do anything for us.
Okay.
So that's what I said before.
So the existence, so you want it?
It's got to show whatever, whatever was originally there has to be laid out on this A2 survey.
Okay.
With existing and then we show the proposed because right now we don't see that.
Okay.
So the problem we run into is the same problem we had before.
Okay.
You're enlarging a non-conformity.
Okay.
Okay. And there's no way we can do any of the stuff that you wanted.
Okay.
Without seeing either the, what was existing and what is proposed. So it's on the same footprint, which is the coverage.
Okay.
Okay, but we don't see that.
Okay.
So, and the other thing that the concern is, is that you have the opportunity, like I said, because you have, you have to elevate. Now, what we need to see, someone needs to just generate an elevation because what you need to know where, where the ground level is, we need to know where the house was, and then we need to see where it's going.
Okay, so I do, did have an elevation survey done, but that's not, that's not enough.
No, no, we need it. So what has to happen? Excuse me?
No, I'm sorry. Sorry to cut you off, Chuck. I'm talking to myself. I should mute myself. I'm sorry.
No, 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 it's okay. I'm just throwing some stuff out and I want you guys to add in. But what we need is an elevation drawing.
I'm going to go back in a minute.
So what will happen is, so if in fact you're elevated and you need additional steps, because we can give them to you, okay? Steps. We can't give you a deck, but we have to give you access into your property. But to do that, we really need to see the elevation so we know what it was before, what we're going to, because, because we have to be FEMA compliant.
And that would be on an A2 survey?
That was, that's basically, this A2 right here, this is, this gives you the coverage, okay? Then there's a separate drawing that will give you elevation. Because we need the elevation.
Okay.
Because FEMA is requiring you to elevate.
Yes.
So we need to see where you were versus where you have to be so that we can give you the relief that you need to put some stairs in to get access to it.
Okay.
So there's, there's a few more things need to be done. Kevin, do you have, do you have any comments?
The only question, other question that I have is there's, what, how are we doing on time in this application? It's not noted in the, this month's.
I noticed that too, but I believe we only used two days out of the, for the extension? It's not on the draw, okay?
Right, I don't.
And I didn't see it either. We, we opened it the previous month.
I think it was the 13th and I think today's the 15th.
One for 65 days.
We use two days. Yeah, we use two days, okay? So you can ask to use additional days to get us to the next. Then at some point, we actually run out of days.
Okay.
At which point you have the opportunity to either have us vote.
Okay.
Or pull it back.
Okay.
And start over again.
Okay. In the minutes, it states one of her 65 days.
Well, yes, one of the, which I, I kind of never wanted to. So you'll have to make a request. Again, you can do that now.
Yep.
To, to use additional days to get us to the next meeting. And then you have some homework to do.
Yes, I do. And you understand it, right? Now I understand. I'm much better. That's why.
You don't want to keep coming back.
No, I mean, you guys are all very, very nice and I thank you for that. Very nice.
John, do you have anything that you want to add?
Uh, Chuck, no, I don't.
Okay, but you, you, you see what we're talking about though in regards to the.
100% I do.
Yeah, okay. I, I'm just, I, I'm just trying to state what we all see, but I want to make sure everybody has an opportunity to discuss it. So.
I fully comprehend what, what the applicant is looking to do, but I agree with you entirely that, you know, an elevation, an architectural elevation would be super helpful.
Right. Because if she, because if she's actually going, I need to know 42 inches from where, okay? So that we understand that. And if she needs additional steps, because FEMA has to ask her to elevate, we can get the steps, okay? So, but I, and I, and, and I know you provided us with some costs.
Yes.
But here's what it is. We're not telling you what to do.
Oh, no.
But, and, and we really don't care what it costs.
Okay.
Okay. Well, it's not that we don't care. You care.
Yes.
We don't look at the cost. We just wanted you to know that if you were going to elevate it up anyways, there's a cost to elevate.
Yes, yes.
And with the foundation, and we just thought if you're going to elevate.
Push it back.
Push it back. Now, if there's a septic system issue, we don't know because your drawing doesn't have it on it.
Okay.
So we wouldn't know.
It's just in the application. I just, I think the word, it was impractical to, to push it to the rear.
Right. And the only reason we wouldn't know is because the septic system isn't on the, the drawing. Traditionally, the septic system in the, in the lease deal would be on the drawing.
Okay.
So that we would know then that it's not practical to do that, especially if it was a new system that was installed.
Okay.
But, or you have the option to figure it out and do it. This is all on you.
Oh, yes.
We're not telling you what to do. We're just saying that you have a lot of buildable space.
Okay.
And if you did, if you were to pick it up and move it back, you could do a lot with the property. And we just want to reiterate one last time that anything under six inches does not count as coverage.
Okay.
So.
And you don't need to permit for that.
Yeah, I don't need to permit for that. You could, you could, you could paper your entire front yard as far as we're concerned, okay? I'm not telling you to do it, but.
And that's, that would.
That's all on you, okay?
And that would meet FEMA's regulations.
Yeah, that, because what happens is you could have a patio which is, which is ground level and it's on your property. No one's going to have a problem with that.
Okay.
It's just that when you build structure over six inches, then it counts as coverage and then you start getting into all the areas of, you know, within the setbacks.
Okay.
But I just wanted you to understand that. Okay, so.
I have one question. On the architectural drawing that you need for this, you just need the front part with the stairs. You don't need the whole house. You just want to show 42 inches of?
Well, on the architectural drawing, we want a, basically a front view of the house, okay?
With it up to 40.
Showing what, where it is. Usually they have an existing and a proposed, just because of the fact that you're elevating. But just so we have an understanding so that it will show that you, if you have three steps to, to egress the house, but in reality, you need five steps now.
Well, I'll give you the measurement from the ground, finished ground to the top.
Someone's going to do the drawings, okay? Yes, so that we have them and so we.
So you just need the front part of the front.
So that we have that.
Chuck, can I jump in here for a second? I, I much rather prefer to see elevation drawings on all four sides, but I get what you're saying with the front. I'm interested to know how the topography, the 42 inch rise impacts the, is impacted by the topography.
Right, so.
I'm not trying to make life difficult for anybody. I'm just saying.
Traditionally, we had a front, back, east, west, you know, it would be nice, okay? Only because on your structure right here.
Yes.
You have, you're, you're in these, you're, you're in the setbacks on the front and on the right side of the house and the left side of the house. So just for us to help you.
Yes, okay.
So, and a good point, John. Okay, I was trying to make it easy for him, but yeah, at this particular point, you really need that. So we have an understanding what we're trying to accomplish.
Okay.
Yeah, Kevin?
Are you going to have her request a continuance until March 12th and have her do a, a letter of request now? So we have some.
Yeah, she's going to do the letter of request and we're going to make a motion to continue it, okay? Up to the next meeting and she's going to use those days that she has available to her for that. Okay? So based on that, would someone, Kevin, would you like to make a motion?
Make a motion to, make a motion 24 slash 5, 20, 24 slash 25 dash 15, the applicant is requested to continue to the March 12th meeting.
She's, she's granted the use of the winter's 65 days.
Yep. Granted, granting the use of, of her, of using more of her 65 days, right? So.
Do you miss anything about coming back to?
Well, no, because she knows when she has to come back. This is.
So my other question is it has to be in a week before this, for the meeting?
Well, ideally, yes, it needs to be a week before the meeting so that we can get it out, okay?
Okay.
Because we're, we're going to vote something in at this meeting in that period.
And so they can have a chance to go over the plans to give more, more time to think about it.
Okay.
So, and, and you're going to provide a letter stating that you want to use those days?
Yes.
Okay. Can I get a second?
I seconded it.
All those in favor?
Fine.
Unanimous, okay. Now. 56 Willard Ave, I'm going to be seeing Lori.
Thank you.
For, thank you, Alfred Wilcox.
Well, you're replacing me.
I'm replacing John with Lori. So I'm trying to, because she actually saw the property.
No, I agree, but I mean, you sat me for Chubb and now you're replacing me with Laurie.
Exactly.
Playing musical chairs.
We're going to get you a T-shirt that says, we're not telling you what to do.
Okay, uh, public hearing 24 slash 25 dash 17C, Gilbert and John Noatar Francesco.
Perfect.
Request a variance of par 10.7.1 slash 10.7.2 non-conformity enlargement slash change, par 58.2 and par 58.6 gateway repairing buffer and structure setbacks slash 100 feet required, 42.6 proposed, and a par 68.1.2 B9 tidal wetlands setback, 50 feet required, 42.6 proposed to construct 180 square foot covered screen porch at 56 Willard Ave, map 24 slash lot 94, Residence 8 District Coastal Area Management Zone Gateway Zone. And notice there is a C there, okay? So we have to remember.
Okay.
Representing the applicant is.
Good evening. Joe Run, professional engineer of Indigo here in town. I have to put this on a recording, so. But with me tonight, as you already know, is the applicant, John Noatar Francesco. He's right here. Came out to the table. This application we feel is very simple. And in your files, you should have a letter of the gateway. They looked at this administratively and said that there's, there's no impact and they support it.
Right. So we don't have to read it in because they, I'm assuming all the, all the board members have read the, the gateway decision and they have no problem with the application as it stands. Sorry.
Correct. And, and part of that reason is because we are just going up vertically over an existing structure. So as you can see on our site plan, the pale yellow is all the existing portion and house and deck. The orange shaded area in that lower corner, that would be the south corner there, is a current deck. So there is yellow underneath that. It just appears orange because that's where the proposed work was made. We provided some photo architectural plans that you have. We also provided photos that I think were provided by the applicant. I think they do a really good job in showing you what's going on. So on the colored photos that we submitted in your application, you can see that south deck with an open railing right now. The proposal is just to basically put a roof on that and screen the edges in. Even the eaves, the, the owners and their designer builder went to a flat roof. So if it was a pitched roof, the eaves, there would be some overhang and we'd be technically a little bit closer, more approaching to the tidal wetlands and the gate, gateway areas. And we did not want to approach any further, especially since previously to build this house in 2012 or 13, and then back in 2020, we were here and received variances at that time for, to build the house within the 100 foot area. You can see the pink lines, the 50 foot and 100 foot. The whole property is within the 100 foot gateway area. So you can't build anything on this lot without needing a variance to come in before you. So that's why it was, we were here or the applicant was here, or previous owner was here originally to construct the house in that area. We came back to add the addition, the north addition on. You can see just outside of the 50 foot area, informing the all the setbacks. We were still within 100 feet, so we got variances from the board to build that addition back down. We did receive variances for coverage for between, remember, we're in that 15 to 20% area here because we're in gateway. So we have the lower threshold of the 15% for coverage. The variance that we got for coverage back then was 18.6. With this work, of course, we're not increasing the coverage because we're just putting a roof over that. That already counts as coverage. So we are utilizing that existing variance. Also, we had a distance from tidal wetlands and we're not getting any closer to that tidal wetland. So that variance still applies there as well. The main variances that are necessary of all of the work is completely inside the 100 foot area of gateway. So looking at those pictures again, just adding screen walls and a roof over that trips the gateway. We have, there are other pictures too from different angles and you can very, very, very clearly see what's happening there. That railing will go away, posts will be added, flat roof will be put on, and then the walls, the screen walls will be added around the edges. So no, no encroachment, no further enclosure. So the variances that we need, of course, the riparian buffer gateway, the gateway conservation zone setback, and then our normal 10.71 and 10.72 where we can't expand or change in any way an existing non-conform structure. Those are the typical ones that are needed. So those are all listed. Almost lastly, the hardship that we included in here had to do with the, the house being, there it is. So the existing property is an existing, not forming a lot of record as discussed earlier. However, the entire buildable area is consumed by the gateway area. So the front yard setback comes all the way in here. The buffer from the gateway area, the tidal wetlands and the coastal jurisdiction line overlap that front yard setback. So even if you built a birdhouse on this lot, you would, you would need variances and more than one. So in this, since we're changing that and adding that roof over that and that screen porch, that's why we're on the for you. Therefore, the entire lot is 100% restricted by yard setbacks, the riparian buffer, the conservation zone setback, and the tidal wetlands. No construction in the existing lot is possible without variances. And as I mentioned previously, but it's important, the previously granted variances included in coverage variance of 18.6%. And this proposed work does not increase the coverage. There is a slight increase in floor area because as you're now familiar with the old Sabre definition of GFA, even if it's not fully conditioned space, if it has a roof over it, counts as gross floor area. So since we're adding a roof over that deck, the floor area goes up, but we're well below the 40% allowed. We're going from 22.6 to 23.9% and allowable in the zone is 40%. So a little over half.
And if I'm correct, if this property were in another location, okay, and the same exact size, that the structure is in the building, is within the setbacks.
Correct.
So the entire, I just want everyone to understand, the entire structure is within the setbacks of the property lines. Where we get into trouble is with the riparian buffer.
Yeah, if this wasn't in gateway, we'd be allowed 20% coverage.
Exactly.
And we'd be conforming on covers less than, we allow coverage. If there were no tidal wetland setbacks, we wouldn't even have to come before.
Exactly. I just wanted everybody to understand, because if you look at the property, you see the, if you see the buildable area, well, there's a lot of, but where we get into trouble is with the, is with the gateway and the repair and buffer at 50 and 100 foot.
And the last thing I wanted to go over with you is we did receive one letter of support. This letter is from Lynn and Susan Mariani to Mulberry Street, and they are the butter on this side.
We did not get a copy.
I have a hair cycle for.
So if you could just forward that copy to our court, otherwise.
And also say, Sarah, please do.
Yes, Sarah.
I'm at the.
Because the problem we're going to have is, is that we don't have a hard copy.
Yeah, that's okay. Unfortunately, I didn't print off our.
No, it's okay. I just wanted to let you know, just so we have.
So this letter, I'll just read it into the record and that's as good as seven figure copy anyways, this part of the record. And it's dated January 25th, 25. To Town Hall Old Saybrook Zoning Board of Appeals. I didn't know if this was addressed to you. I didn't know if you had received a copy. It sounds like you didn't. So, dear zoning board, we received a letter from you as adjacent, this is written to the applicant. We received a letter from you as adjacent property owners. We would like to state that we've been in the property of John and Jill Noatar Francisco, 56 Willard Avenue multiple times and living in this area. We agree that a covered deck with screens is not only prudent, but necessary. The sun is very intense along the water and protection is important for both the structure and the residents. The mosquitoes are always a problem and the screens will help with insect form diseases. Thank you for your time, Lynn and Susan Mariani to Mulberry Street, Old Saybrook.
Perfect.
Correct. Which email address would you like me to send that to?
Um, the karen.douyee@oldsaybrookz.org and Sarah, please.
Excellent.
That's going to be on its way now.
Thank you.
Do we have any questions of the applicant? And does the board have any questions at this particular point? Kevin, any questions?
No questions. It's a small project, well thought out.
Agreed.
I don't have any questions. So what I'm going to do at this point, I'm going to open it to, I'm, I'm going to, open it to public comment. Is anybody in the public wishing to stay for or against this application?
I own the property next door to him.
Can you state your name?
It's a building lot, huh? Scott Mitchell.
Nice friend.
Well, um, I have no problems with it whatsoever. It's technically my dad's property, but it's going to be mine eventually. They're in Florida, so they, they used to ask me to come down there and take a look, you know, see what it looks like. They're in Florida, so they, they used to ask me to come down here and take a look, you know, see what it was about. If you really need a birdhouse and you don't want to air it.
So just for information, Mitchell property is just a.
Okay, uh, hearing, uh, one, one person is talking in favor. I get, I'm going to close public comment at this point and open it up to discussion amongst the board. And if there's no discussion, we'd like to make a motion, I'm, I'm all for that. Kevin?
Mr. Chairman, were you gonna read the, uh, gateway letter into the record?
I wasn't really planning on it, because everyone gets tired of reading, but, no, that's not the gateway. But what I could do is. I just had it. There you go. I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna highlight the bottom. Okay, findings. Uh, this was generated on January seventeenth, twenty-twenty-five, in regards to twenty-four slash twenty-five dash seventeen C. After reviewing the application, the Connecticut River Gateway Commission, uh, agreed staff could respond to the referral administrative. Although the existing structure sits inside the gateway conservation zone, a hundred-foot structure with riparian buffers and exceeds the lock coverage maximum by three point six percent, the proposed project to add a roof that extends to the edge of the second floor balcony and screen in the space will not increase encroachment into the setback or lock coverage. No other gateway standards are violated, therefore, uh, gateway does not oppose approval of the application. We thank the Old Sabre Board for its continued help. And that's, it was, uh, written by Susan W. Beckman, regional planner for River Park. So, it read in, but they didn't have an issue with that, that was my biggest concern. So, would someone like to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Anybody on the, yes?
I'll make a motion to, to approve twenty-four slash twenty-five seventeen C. Based on, uh, the property received variances in the past, and to just cover it with a, you know, with a screened-in porch that's gonna, afford the people a healthier environment to be out there. And that it does not increase the, um, the footprint in the floor area, even with the increase is, uh, barely over fifty percent of what they're allowed. So, it's just very, very small ask.
And I, I would just like to add, reference, we're talking about a coastal site plan, which is, uh, dated December eighteenth, twenty-twenty-four, and prepared, uh, by, uh, Indigo.
There's a revision on that.
And revision that we see there. And we're at revision one, which was dated one-eight, twenty-twenty-five, minor revision for ZBA. I'd also like to state that they have, uh, two years from the date of approval to get a permit. So.
I will second you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, Cam. Oh, I'd like to, that's right. Uh, I'd like to make a motion to accept the KIM for property, uh, fifty-six Willard Ave, again, which would be twenty-two slash twenty-three dash seventeen C.
And I'll second that motion as well.
All those in favor? Aye. Great, thank you.
I'd like to thank you.
Oh, you're very welcome.
The time and the work that you did, thank you.
Okay, and we have. Permit extension request. Twenty-two slash twenty-three dash seventeen C Wade Box. Seems to have variance of par ten point seven point one slash ten point seven point two non-conforming enlargement slash change. Par twenty-four point five point one, street line setbacks, twenty-five foot required, eighteen foot proposed. In a par twenty-five, twenty-four point five point three, side yard setbacks, fifteen feet required, thirteen feet to house and seven feet to the deck proposed of the zoning regulations to permit the shifting and elevation of an existing home and and structure of one eight, uh, one hundred and eighty-two square foot deck, with second story deck above with eighty-five square foot at twenty-one DeMore Lane, map eighteen slash lot twelve, residence A district coastal area management zone, AE ten flood zone. We received, uh, a letter from, uh, Attorney, uh, Casella. Dear Chris, this letter is to follow up to the January third, twenty-twenty-five letter, in which we requested a one-year extension of the time to obtain billing permits and commence construction on Bot's property at twenty-one DeMore Lane. After several delays, Mr. Bot restarted the permit process and has recently confirmed that there is no need for wetlands commission review. Now that the investigation has been completed, is ready to start construction. We thank the board for its participation in consideration, Attorney Casella. And we also see a letter, uh, to the land use department, uh, from, uh, from the land use department to Mr. Casella, dated, uh, January twenty-second. I have received a letter from Robert C. Russo CSS, which states that he found no inland wetlands on twenty-one DeMore Lane or on the adjacent parcel to the south at the end of DeMore Lane, map eighteen slash lot thirteen, and the wetlands on the adjacent parcel are tidal. Based upon the findings of this investigation, any activity proposed for twenty-one DeMore Lane would not be subject to permitting under the Old Sabre inland wetlands and water course regulations. And that's sincerely Lynette Walker, inland wetlands enforcement officer. So, uh, based on that, I'm going to make a motion to give a one-year extension to twenty-two slash twenty-three dash seventeen C, noting that this is the last extension that we can give, and they have one year from the date of this meeting to, uh, start the project. Can I get a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Done. Now, we have one last piece of business. And it's regards to the proposed amendment to ZBA guidelines regarding exhibits at hybrid meetings. This was the draft that was written, uh, generated by, uh, the, uh, by Chris's Costa's department. Exhibits are posted to the ZBA website as a courtesy by the land use department. Exhibits submitted on the day of a meeting are not guaranteed to be posted to the website. Applicants in the public must be prepared to provide it. Any exhibits submitted the day of the meeting using their own computer so the public and voting board members will be able to view all material submitted to the record during the public hearing. Failure to allow this guideline may result in the continuation of a matter to provide an opportunity for all parties attending the hearing to have the opportunity to review the same material, particularly members seated to vote on an appeal. The board in its discretion may read newly submitted letters without photographs into the record if they are provided at the meeting. Has everyone had a chance to review this?
Yes.
Yes.
I, I like the language, and I, I commend Kevin for initiating this. Uh, I make a motion to, uh, to, to.
Accept.
To use the, uh, the exhibit that was generated by, uh, by land use. And to be part of our zoning ZBA regulations for a meeting. Can I get, is, is any discussion on that?
There were, there were a couple of minor, little, um, grammar things that I noticed. I don't know if you wanna correct those now or later, I don't have the. Say it again, Chuck.
Let's correct them.
I.
Before we.
The problem is I don't have the paper in front of me. I just, I was, I remember reading it and thinking that's gonna change.
You didn't vote? You read it correctly, but you read, um, the way it should read, but it says particularly members seated to vote on an appeal. That was one of the.
Seating, seated, it should be, okay, see seating, seated. Yes, I corrected it because it didn't, it didn't sound right.
It sounded, yeah, it sounded right when you read it.
Okay, very, very good, okay?
There's an apostrophe, there's an apostrophe S somewhere on there, I could, I think it might be under its, that's not correct.
Yes. In its discretion in the last paragraph, to the board, comma, in its discretion.
The board, comma, in its discretion.
Take out the apostrophe, so.
In its discretion, comma?
No, take out the apostrophe in, in its possessive discretion as opposed to.
Confexional, okay, take out the apostrophe.
Yeah.
Got it. So based on the corrections, which you have now?
The two, only two, John?
Two corrections which we made.
John, only two corrections you noted?
Me? No, that was Sandra.
Andrew, Andrew, only, basically, it's Andrew, two corrections that you noticed?
That's what, that's what I recall.
That sounds great, okay, because we see both of them. Okay, based on that, we've amended it to, 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 uh, read correctly. Can I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. That. The minutes, I myself have reviewed the minutes, and I don't have any issues with them. Does anybody else have any issues with the minutes at this point?
No.
No.
Hearing none, I'd like to make a motion to approve, to approve, to approve the regular minutes from the, uh, uh, January eighth, uh, meeting. Can I get a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Correspondence and announcements, we have done, committee representative has to report, and I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. Can I get a second? All those in favor? Aye. Have a wonderful, happy Valentine's Day.